Good evening. The time is now 5:27. The Wazetta Public Schools Board of Education Work Session for Monday, October 27, 2025, will please come to order. We'll start with quick introductions, beginning from my right.
Heidi Kater.
Dan Janestra.
Paris Binde.
Valentina Ayers.
Sarah Johansson.
Chase Anderson.
And I am Melin Sohoni. Thank you and welcome, everyone. This evening, we have two items on the agenda. The first one is the community survey results, and the second is the comprehensive achievement and civic readiness, part one of the annual report. The first item on the agenda is the superintendent reports, and Dr. Anderson will introduce our guest.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, thank you for giving me an opportunity to introduce Peter Leatherman, who's here from the Morris Leatherman Company. He and his firm have been engaged in doing a community survey. As you know, we've been in the throes of conversation about facilities. And as part of our normal protocol over the years, when we've been considering facilities, additions or improvements or enhancements, we've done surveys within the community for a couple of reasons. One, to get a random sample for the sentiment in the community and levels of support for the district in general, and also for the possibility of new facilities being considered. And also to help guide us as we work toward a final recommendation to bring to the board, which will be forthcoming if we make the decision to move forward and give consideration to those facilities that we've been discussing. Keep in mind that in that regard, we've been working for two or three years and putting together preliminary ideas about needs across the district. And we'll be working in tandem with our leadership staff and our strategic partners, Kraus Anderson and old architects and engineers, to determine how best to move forward. But for tonight, it's not specifically about just facilities, but about the results of this community survey. So without further elaboration, I'm going to turn it over to our guest, Peter Leatherman. Thank you so much for being here tonight. And sorry for starting a little bit late here. I know that you were scheduled for a little bit earlier, but we appreciate you being here tonight and look forward to hearing your presentation. Thank you.
No worries. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. We're going to, did the survey, I was out here this spring, kind of the overall survey, how people were thinking about the district. As we look at this one, this is what I call a guardrail survey for a potential bond referendum. At the end of the day, we're looking to see what components that our district is considering have high levels of support, what components don't have as much support as the facilities committee starts to tailor a recommendation. There are some repeat questions from the spring, because as public opinion is moving on education, there are some things to check in on a six-month basis, and so that's included up front. Just to review with everybody what we did, we spoke with 400 randomly selected residents across the community. Results are projectable to within plus or minus 5%. It was a shorter survey. Average interview time was nine minutes. And the telephone interviews were conducted back in the last two weeks of September. No major changes on the demographics from the spring. Everything looks stable. Typical resident's been here for about 15 years. 13% have a preschooler in their household. 30% have a child attending the Wazetta Public Schools. And then 66% are empty nesters. They have no children. Home values comes in, now this is, this is their, the median, comes in over 400,000. Men and women are equally divided. If we continue, the typical resident's been here about 47 years, highly educated, as always, almost two-thirds, having college degrees, either bachelor's, master's, or doctorates. The financially stressed, a little bit lower than in the spring in this district, and we're seeing that across the state. This continues to come down. The statewide that I just shared with the education clients that we did in August, we had 38%. So you've been historically about 10 points lower on the financially stressed, and that's the major factor over the past few election cycles when districts are asking for funding requests. So it is going to be a mitigating factor this November. We will talk about what the major factor will be for districts coming up this November and looking into next year. And then you can see the geographic distribution based on registered voters. We asked folks, because the discussions at this point in time had started on the facilities. And so we were curious if anybody would, in an open-ended, bring up facilities at this point in time. There was 1% that are in the scattered category. It's not a top-of-the-mind, first thing they're thinking of. What is? It's the lack of funding, 24%. This is pretty consistent now. Somewhere between 20 and 25% of Minnesotans will say, off the top of their mind, the most serious issue is lack of funding. Now, this is one of those things is like discipline that crosses borders. So if necessarily, if you're not doing budget cuts, but your neighbors are, that's what people are going to think about, because now it's the inevitable that's going to be happening. If they're doing it, then we'll probably be having to do it. So it is growing. Last year, that was in the 15% to 20% range, where uptick into the low 20s. Large class sizes, this probably has come up because of the facilities discussion, potential for need of space. So one in seven are already thinking about large class sizes. Lack of discipline, it's typically right around 10%. For all 30 years I've been doing these sorts of surveys, it's always been about one in 10. And then a few issues in the single digits. Still, very strong booster core at 22%, saying there are no problems in the district. This is utopia. And so that one in five is relatively strong. We're finding that now about eight or nine percent. So about 2X of what we're seeing this fall for the booster core. Quality of education. When I was here in the spring, I talked about this, that you have avoided what so many other didn't have been able to avoid, and that's the slide from the good to the only fair category. The median, the norm right now, an excellent and good is 77% across the state of Minnesota. You're at 89%. The excellent rating is at 11%. So you're 3X. So still relatively strong in comparison. You have a wall, and it really is important to maintain that, because when somebody goes from a good to an only fair, you have to get them to change their mind. If they go from excellent to good, you have to make them more enthusiastic about something they believe in. So it really is important to try to maintain that favorable rating. Some of the key perceptions, in the spring, we asked probably 10 or 12 different statements. These are kind of focusing, looking at the, kind of the process, how people are feeling about the district as you're coming up with a facilities plan. Does the district spend taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently? Effi- efficiently? 81%. Norm on this right now is 62%. So 20 points higher than the norm. Satisfied with decision-making? We saw the uptick from 23 to 24. It went up 11 points. It maintained 85%. Do they trust you to do what's right for children? 91%. That's about 15 points higher than the norm. And you see, we had a 10-point increase from 23 to 24. So two data points, a trend does not make. You need a third data point to see if it's stable. But there's a sense that there's kind of been a stability now, and that you have come back to where you were back in 2019, before the pandemic kind of turned everything on its head. This is really a critical piece when you're having a facilities planning discussion. And that is, do they believe that the district does a good job of involving the community? This is critical, and you're doing very well. The norm on this right now is 72% in the most recent statewide, so 15 points higher. You were always high before the pandemic. Everybody dropped because of the pandemic, because it became hard to involve people when you're on Zoom meetings. So that's a really critical piece. It's going to be important as if and when you, when you finally move forward with a plan, that it's emphasized that the community was part of the discussion. Do they support a tax increase to protect the investment in the education of Wazetta Public Schools? Absolutely. 74 to 20. The 20% is the low over the past two years. I looked a few weeks ago at all my clients that are on the ballot next Tuesday. My gosh, eight days away. The norm for this round is 33%. Disagree. One in three in the district are against anything before they even know what the potential, they don't know if it's an operating levy, a bond referendum, if it's $5 a month or $5 a year. They're already entrenched. So once again, this doesn't mean everything passes. But when that, the lower that number it is, there's a willingness to have a discussion. It's not a reflex of, no, I'm going to be against anything. And then we did add into this survey, do they believe the district has done a good job of aligning projections with needed space in district buildings? And there is a trust in this process. You know, this question, we only, you know, I did a survey back when the Wazetta High School was built for the district. So this one kind of just pops in here, and it popped in in 2013. And there's, they've always given you the credit that you do a good job of monitoring and looking at projections and then aligning space. Financial management? This is really, really strong. In Minnesota, right now, we're at about 52% excellent or good. So the 74% is just right at the top. The issue for districts in 2025 is the property tax climate. And I mentioned this when I was here in the spring. And the, the spring number is the dark blue bar. And you can see, we had 63% say their total taxes were high. 51% say that their school taxes were high. In April, when the survey was done, though, everybody just got done paying the first half property tax. All right? So you kind of forget about it. This will go back up when people get their November 15th property tax statement all over the state. So you still have 55%. It's down eight points. But we still see everything, we see the same thing district after district. You have an eight-point gap from total taxes to school taxes. People are not blaming their school districts for what's happened with property taxes right now. They blame the cities and counties and townships. That remains, that's the good news. The bad news is, they don't have to go to the voters. And by the time, I have many clients right now that in September, their residents learned that they were going to have a 20 or 25% tax increase from the city or county, right at the time that the voter started voting on a school district levy increase. And so it makes it a very difficult environment right now. Very, it goes back to the late 90s in public opinion on people's feelings on property taxes right now in the state of Minnesota. This chart, this says it all about what, where folks are at in thinking about education funding. They have no idea. And 21, 71% said, yeah, the district's adequately funded. But now let's put that in context. That was when Governor Walz did his victory march all over Minnesota about all the money he gave education. Then by 23, he gave a lot of money, a lot of money, but now districts are making cuts. So I don't know. Now, in 25, yours went up. Went down 10 points in a few months. What happened? I think a lot of this is what's happening around you at this point in time, and the discussions happening in surrounding districts. If they heard the district was going to ask for a property tax increase, are they for all, against all, or are they persuadable? 1% more, you start out 1% ahead. 26% for all, 25% for all, or against all. Right now, with the clients on the ballot, the norm is a negative four. They actually have 4% more opposition than support. But it'll all come down to the persuadables and how they fall. And so it's a great position to be, but the key will be aligning the wants and needs of the persuadables with the plan that's put forward by the district. The let's make a deal question. The first thing I look at is the nothing. We want that to be under 35%. So at 27%, that's a good position to be in. We have 26% at $10 a month, 25% at $20 a month, and then we have 19% at over 30. If we look at those that are willing to accept a property tax increase, I'm going to take out the nothing and look at those willing, it comes in roughly at $18 a month. Just round it to 20 for the sake. Now, the key on this, though, you know, school boards have always asked me, is this number set in stone? It is not set in stone. It's meant to give you an idea that the further you go from that number, it is most impactful of what's included in aligning the values of the package. There was an example I used back in 2017, the Richfield School District did a survey like this, and they had not updated their. It came in that $10 a month, that's what they, they supported. We went through a list that you're going to see in a few slides of about 15 items, and they didn't have less than 65% support for any item, all the way up to 85%. They went for $27 a month, and it passed two to one. Okay? Because it aligned with the values. I've also seen districts come in under the number, and it includes things that people don't like. Oak River years ago tried to get a ice arena, and it was actually $2 under what the tolerance was, but the community didn't want an ice arena. Just because it aligned with the dollar amount doesn't mean that they're going to support We've had a little bit of a change. It is statistically, it's on the edge of statistical significance. Do they believe that the buildings and facilities meet the needs of educating today's children? 86% this spring said yes, 79%. So technically, it needs to be more than five points. We do have 16 points, 16% saying no. So this whole discussion, moving forward of the planning process, this isn't to fix something that's broken, it's to improve what they already have. How do you have? Because you could see, of those saying yes, it's a soft yes. It's, you, at the end of the day, you're not moving from somebody from, you're not, they're not going to support because they think, no. They think, yes, I don't want to be strong yes. And in this district, it has always been critical to link facilities to curriculum and programming. That's what folks value in the school district. Some things that, the perception out there in the community needs to be worked on with this one. Does the district, do they think that the district has enough space to accommodate future enrollment growth? Yes. 60% indicate that they do believe that's the case. Do they believe that the buildings currently provide sufficient flexible learning space? 70% believe that that is the case. How important isn't it to, how important isn't to ensure comparable spaces between buildings across the Wazetta School District? Well, 80% say it's either very or somewhat. Do they believe that there is comparability in spaces between school buildings and the Wazetta Public Schools? 75% believe that's the case. So once again, this is, this is, you have to show them. District, you know, the flexible learning spaces, I've been doing surveys, Edina was the first one back in 2019, and we had, back then, it was called 21st Century Learning Spaces. So we had a definition, and you explained it to folks what it was. And you'd have people say, yeah, that is important, and yeah, my district has that. Well, 66% of people are empty nesters. Half of them haven't been in a school building since before, when there were chalkboards and erasers. You have to show them what it is. Similarly, with comparable. You know that's a value they have. So then you, you talk to them and show them, if they're not comparable, why they are not. Do they believe over the past five years, new housing construction has increased? Absolutely. Two-thirds. Do they believe it will continue to increase? Absolutely. So the history, in 2013 in this district, Amy will remember, when we asked this question, the whole south side of the district had no idea of the housing construct. They didn't come up to North Plymouth. You know, they, it's not on your way to Minneapolis to go to North Plymouth. So you had to show people the mailings of the development pictures and everything. It's, it's accepted in the district that it has increased, and it's also accepted that it's going to increase. Student enrollment, similarly, 55% believe it's increased, 65% believe that it will continue to increase. So with that in place, the key is going to be, the foundation is there. But folks do believe that all three levels of school buildings do have enough space to accommodate the growth. 62% for the elementary school, 55% for the middle school, and then 62% for the high This is the critical chart when you're looking at putting together a potential referendum package. And this is simply, would you support a property tax increase for? Not surprising. Safety and security is at the top. And it's actually now, I'm starting to do surveys for districts, looking at spring referendum, like you, fall referendum. Safety and security, I didn't think it could get much higher. It'd been around 80%. Enunciation has changed it over the past six weeks. 88%. Renovation of special education spaces, 72%. Expand kitchens and cafeterias, 68. Expand high school CTE space, 66. Ensure comparable facilities, 65. Additional early learning classrooms, 65. Desk classroom furniture, 62. You can see the construction of the high school, fourth middle school, and 10th elementary school are towards the bottom of the list, but part of it is, it's a solution to a problem that they don't realize at this point in time. So if the numbers do bear out, go back to what they said, they believe the district bases the space needs on accurate demographic enrollment projections. That would, that would rise. And not surprisingly, I shared this with the facilities committee, an eight-lane swimming pool is divisive. Athletics, theater, anything outside of core academics and space and safety and security is always going to be at the bottom of a list in a difficult economic climate. Now, the economic climate is improving, but now it's the property tax issue coming into play. And people are willing to support half-to-haves. And I tell the athletic people, and I apologize to them, that athletics is a nice-to-have at this point in time. So the recommendation coming forward from this is that, when you look, I'll do a summary, and then, overall assessment of a good, a good idea, a bad idea? You do only have 19% saying a bad idea. And like that, we had almost 50% opposing the swimming pool, because there were so many other things that they highly supported. I think, you know, a plan, you know, $20 a month, you could go higher than that if the plan did not include a swimming pool. If the pool comes forward, I would highly recommend it be a second question. And let the community decide. There's, there's a clear theme in all the other components of space, programming, and safety and security. And then it'd be very easy, something like that could very easily become a lightning rod that could potentially risk everything. So I would, I would submit, you know, if, if a pool is more than 5% of the total package, it should be positioned to the community as a second question. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions?
Thank you so much for the very informative presentation. I think it tells us a great story about our district's doing well, and as well as our future. So I have one question. If you wouldn't mind flipping back to the slide that kind of listed out the different infrastructure extensions or additions we could have. My first question's a technical question. I noticed the difference in approval between construction of a fourth middle school and 10th elementary school is, you had 61 versus 58%. Is that difference statistically significant?
It is not.
It is not? Okay.
Yeah. It needs to be a difference greater than 5%.
Than 5, okay. Thank you. And then my, my other question is, it's, I think, also known that it's not just, you know, homeowners, town homeowners, renters in our district who would contribute to new buildings, it would also be companies, commercial real estate owners who, you know, have property in our district. Is there a wide understanding that perhaps they're actually, because commercial real estate subsidizes single-family homes, and so they actually pay a significant amount of the, you know, dollar amount, that that kind of helps out, you know, affording something like this? Do single-family homeowners know they had to have some relief in that way? Is that widely known?
It, it's a, it's, it's true, nuanced, and too inside-baseball for the average voter. I would, I would put it that way. At the end of the day, you know, I mean, what happens even, bond referendum up north, I was on a call with them for an hour and a half on Friday, the NO Committee is fixated not only on the, put out a flyer of the total tax increase over 25 years on a home, homes in the district at different levels. So instead of $5 a month, it's 60 times 12 times 25. And at the end of the day, the first thing people think about is their monthly mortgage payment, because so many people escrow their, their property taxes. What will that increase? They're not thinking 25 years from now, or anything like that. And so you could, it is true, and I know that there are districts that want to go out and say, well, my property tax increase for a package like this is, would be, well, I was on a call with one that would be $49 a month for $200 million, because they don't have that commercial base. That's all well and good, but it doesn't, at the end of the day, how much does it cost the individual property owner?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. It, I don't know that we can do pictures of farmland with, with the big flags that say Wazetta Schools, like we did back in 2016, right? Like, that was our, just showing blocks and blocks of where they were building. I have two questions for you. And one is, you've, and they're about kind of what you referenced. So the first is, you talked a lot about the, the neighbor effect. And so if, if neighboring districts are facing budget cuts, then we would, and you're talking about that. What do you see as the tone from the national conversation that is impacting things? So when people hear nationally that full departments are being cut that send money to schools, and then do they, do they translate that to, that's going to impact my school district? Or is that separate?
We haven't, we haven't seen it in the polling. I'm going to do another statewide, simply because I can't stand it. The August, the August one left off probably 100 questions that we wanted to ask, but we were already at 120 questions in that survey, so can't do 220 questions, especially on politics. I want to explore that deeper. I need the government shutdown to end in order to help, to help on that. In polling earlier this spring, not that we've done, we did, but that I've seen from some people that I trust, the whole Department of Education discussion is, at that point in time, was kind of seen as a pillow fight. That people realize the, what, 64% of the funding comes from the state of Minnesota, and it is a smaller amount from the federal. That level impacts. So it'll be interesting to see how that develops. But the, the whole Department of Ed kind of went quiet, that whole discussion. I mean, this is something new every other day. So yeah, it's easy to get distracted on it.
Okay. Thank you. And then I just want to make sure that we understand something else that you said, which is, you were talking about people feeling their tax, like, as they're related to taxes. And, and our fall numbers went up, and people feeling better. And you said, because in the spring, in April, they were And you said, because in the spring and April, they were opening their tax bills, right? So is that an important data point as we are considering a spring referendum? And so if that's the, the mood, mood and tone when people are taking the survey?
I mean, it will. I, I mean, the, the data plays out. And I had to have somebody do the data because fifteen years ago, April was not the second best time to go. May was. I think a lot of factors came into play. You know, still April, it's not only their tax day, it's all, it's not only property taxes, it's income tax day. I, I think a lot of districts have had so much difficulty over the last fifteen years with May referendums. And it has not so much to do with taxes. It's about volunteers and getting parents to the polls, which is difficult whether you're going in April, May, August or November. And it has impacted greatly. So the data does bear out that over the past ten years, April is the second best chance for success. I have a, I, I am beginning to wonder, as I've seen the last two November election cycles and what is happening in districts when cities and counties announce the preliminary tax assessment for the next year in the middle of September and people are voting the next week, early voting. That might be a game changer for bond referendums, uh, in the future to completely stay away from November at that point in time and let the community, this is where we're at. And not have the issues of what the cities and counties have done.
How much time do we have?
Just kidding.
So I love numbers. Quite frankly, I'm trying to get my head around and I like, I need help. So again, I'm not being critical, just trying to understand. So demographics, one slide. The, and again, not against any specific demographics, but it shows sixty-six percent empty nesters. Is that by design or is just happened to be like that? So when I look at how many actually parents with kids have in school district, that percentage is way lesser. So that's sort of, you know, the first data point, right? And table it, I'll get there in a minute. So, oh. Yeah, and just in conjunction with that, when you look at the most serious issues, the last two buckets that says nothing or unsure. What are they trying to say? Doesn't impact me, I don't care.
Yeah, I, I'll answer this, I'll go back and just have a discussion on demographics. We differentiate the unsure versus the nothings. There's a difference in say, I don't know, I don't pay any attention. The nothings, they truly believe there are no issues. Yeah, this is the, and we call them boosters. And if I would, if I cross tab the data by all the demographics and if I isolate the booster core, they are positive. Typically ten to fifteen points more positive than the typical resident. Now, the demographics, we do quota based sampling. So when we start, uh, a survey process, uh, this, making the calls, I have targets for the phone bank to be within the margin of error of the survey. With updated census information, now the census has a margin of error. Some categories, it's a narrower margin of error than others, but still it's a margin of error. There are some key demographics I look at that we key in on. The percent of households with children, uh, I believe in this district, it's about thirty-two percent. So we're within the two points. Now that, now, and that sixty, I should say sixty-six percent empty, empty nester implies old. It's not equal, we could have a twenty-three-year-old without a child in this there and it just, it's a classification. Renters versus homeownership is also a good one from the census. And then households with seniors is also good. And then the geographic distribution, I just do it based on the registered vote. So it's, it's quota based, it's, it is intentional. If we, at some point, you always have to do it, but we just do it intentionally instead of, because I don't reweight like so many other posters do.
Yeah, so, excuse me, so that, that's good. So if I count nothing as supportive, supportive, right? That brings the most serious issues, kind of sixty percent of them, either they are happy, they think lack of funding or class sizes, right? So that's, that's the problem statement if you. When you look at how many people are supporting tax increase, I think one of the slides said seventy percent. But then as you start going down the subsequent slides, that percentage is all over the place, including the last slide where really where the class sizes matter, those things are at the bottom. So my question is, are responders, survey responders, are they thinking holistically? Or they are answering questions to individual questions, answering, you know what I mean?
My business.
You get my point, right?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I, first off, my business partner, when I started, he was my staff professor, uh, at Augsburg College, call it the Harvard of Minneapolis, uh, back in ninety-four. And when I started doing this in ninety-five, the first survey that I ran, and we're going through it, I'm like, this makes no sense. And he's like, if you look for logical consistency in public opinion, you'll never add. So you could see how, I mean, my favorite in Minnesota, and this doesn't actually, we do a lot of surveying in Wisconsin, Indiana. I'll point it out to you here is tax predisposition. Just in concept, twenty-five percent are against all. You only have two percent Minnesota nice. Cause the nothing on the next slide, when I asked for a dollar amount goes up to twenty-seven percent. And so, okay, I'm persuadable until you're really asking me for a dollar amount, now I gotta say nothing. It's, it's, it's the Minnesota part of it. Going back to the class size piece, you had fourteen percent say large class sizes are the issue. So they're baked into the, uh, that, like the answers on, does a district have currently enough space? Thirty-two percent say no. So they're in that group, they're already represented. Similarly, uh, enough space to accommodate the growth, fourteen percent large class sizes, that's in there. You know, with just the, the district on the construction of high school classrooms, construction of for the middle school and the elementary school. Very few districts in Minnesota would have that level of support for a solution when you have that many people not seeing the problem. But it goes back to the political capital and the trust that the district residents have in the district. Going back to eighty percent believe that the district aligns the needs with space based on real projections. So there is that inherent trust. Once you get into the discussion of the growth coming in the middle school, in the high school, the residents here will trust it because they, they also will be proactive. There are some school districts that they say, I need to see the kids lined up like cordwood outside and then we'll vote. This district, there are some forward-thinking districts that say, okay, I trust the numbers. This is going to happen in five years and you can't build a middle school in six weeks. Okay, we have to be thoughtful and pla, and plan for this. So that's kind of what, does that kind of help with it?
Yeah, and again, I was trying to understand what, what is the message out of this, right? And you touched upon some of it that, hey, the, the community trusts, you know, financial decisions, right? Community trusts the enrollment numbers. You also talked about educating community on, hey, where the growth is or how the growth looks like. So obviously you already talked about it. And again, that's what I was trying to understand. Yes, this is good, but then what do we do with this data and how do we think about it? Because some of those points were kind of a little bit contradictory. So I was trying to make sense out of it. So, no, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I have a couple of questions. One is about, do you do this for most districts in the state, right? This kind of survey?
A lot, yes.
Classroom, and then we have students who need an, an extensive dose of extra or remediation. Doesn't mean they're still not getting tier one, they're getting tier one, tier two and two, three, or we like to think of it as extra scoops. And then we're using assessment data, both satellite, so you're seeing a lot of satellite data tonight, right? MCA's, fast bridge. But we also use that street level data, which is what our teachers see in the classroom and know about our students. And we put all that into action. And so that's part of that data decision-making model. And so what are we doing? We like to talk about this, again, a lot of data, but how does that, um, lead us to action? And so we're talking about that in systems of responses. And so we want to say where I'm going to, these are just kind of a high over fly view. This is by no means an exhaustive list because we wouldn't have time to go through everything that is happening inside our classrooms to address those gaps that we see. But it's important that that responses we have are both systematic and collaborative. As you've heard before, we have built teams, are building instructional teams. And we're looking for where those patterns emerge that we can connect directly to our reading intervention at the instructional level. And that our, our coordinators can also attach to and support teachers in. Our literacy coaches, as you know, we've invested highly in Orton Gillingham as, um, as well as our curriculum and the required state training. And so we're really fortunate in Wayzetta that not only have we done the state required training, but we've layered that on with OG and have a OG trainer in, um, in Julie on our team as well. And so they are really, um, our literacy coaches are really embedded in that PLC process. We have, um, two full-time literacy coaches at the elementary level and then seven part-time literacy coaches in, in the other buildings. And it's based again on that data and need, and they are arm-in-arm with our teachers and, and helping there. And then our literacy specialist or sometimes referred to as our intervention, um, teachers. Their job then is to really be getting more of that tier three intensive intervention, but also in supporting teachers on how they're adapting the curriculum. But we're really focusing then in our literacy specialists with those students who are in the twenty-fifth percentile or below on fast bridge assessments. And one of the changes that we've made over the years is that that supports follows the students. So our literacy specialists are district level, um, staff and they go to where the student need is. And so wherever the highest need is, that is where those, those teachers respond to. And then in professional learning, we've really been focusing then on that formative assessment, meaning what, what are we learning about the students in the moment? That changes my instructional modality. We're not waiting. One thing nice about our data at the classroom level is we're not waiting on those results to make an instructional pivot. And so that's the work of those PLCs, essential standards and success criteria as well. And then we want to make sure we also are working on to clearly define what it is we want students to know and at what rigor level they need to know that at. And again, that's part of that PLC process that we've been working on so deeply. And then at the early literacy, we're really emphasizing again that Orton Gillingham. So all of our kindergarten and first grade teachers are now trained in Orton Gillingham. And we're also doing some piloting of how to embed that even more deeply in our reading curriculum at some of our most neediest, um, spaces. And then we are piloting, um, second grade has been offered OG training as an optional, um, piece. And we're seeing just how that, um, layers in as we know that we do have students in second grade that are still reading at a kindergarten and first grade level. So our second grade teachers having that training may be advantageous as well. Um, in grades six through eight, then, um, many of the same strategies are taking place. At the secondary level, it gets to be more embedded in a teaming process with targeted interventions and programmings. But again, we're using those built teams to look at our growth, instructional coordinators. Our reading intervention teachers more partner with our classroom teachers daily and also provide some direct instruction in there. We've been, um, mon, to have some new monitoring tools, including a new program called Lexia this year. We've been doing additional building level, um, professional learning. And then as you heard from, I think it was Meg that was here, we're looking at some explicit content vocabulary instruction because that was an area that was noted, um, for importance, as well as how do we, um, leverage that instructional support during my time?
Okay, so the twenty focus areas, I think Dana, you were gonna.
That's right, that's still me, isn't it? Yes, all right. So then we are setting the goals for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And so there is no numbers with these yet because we use this data that is just coming in to say, okay, now where are we? And what are those next goals that we set? But we know that they'll be again around the increasing students at or above grade level, the aggressive growth. So similar to the goals we've done this year, just plugging in the new numbers as soon as we know what those are. And then we bring those to Superintendent Anderson and the Committee of Teaching and Learning Committee of the Board to finalize those for you as well.
Okay, great. So next, we're going to be sharing the MCA results for reading and math. So as you know, MCA's are state accountability tests. And our goals for twenty-four, twenty-five included reading and math, so we're sharing those tonight. So our SMART goals, um, for grades three through eight, um, was that increasing the number of students who score proficient. So for grades, um, three through eight, going from seventy-two to seventy-four percent. And grades, uh, three through eight, sorry, for reading and three through eight for math, it was seventy-five to seventy-seven percent. For our high school, um, student participation has been a challenge for the last few years. So we have a participation goal for our high school level. So grade ten, the goal was to go from eighty-three percent to eighty-five percent participation. And grade eleven, sixty-nine to seventy-one percent participation. So looking at our reading data, um, you can see that from twenty, the year twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three, our, um, percent proficient on reading went down. However, in the last three years, it has been stable. And in, um, twenty-four, twenty-five, it was at seventy-one percent. When looking at the data by race ethnicity, um, comparing, um, twenty-four, twenty-five to the, where we were at in twenty-one, twenty-two, all of the groups went down approximately four to, four to six points. And the gap between our highest and lowest group has stayed at forty points for the last four years. The performance, um, by special population for special education and students in the free reduced meals group has stayed the same over the last four years. And our multilingual learners group has gone down each of the four years. When looking at math, you can see that over the four years, there has been a, a decrease in percent of students proficient. One thing I do want to note is that we will start implementing the new twenty-twenty-two math standards this year in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And the MCA four will be related to the new standards and the first year for the MCA four will be in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. When looking at our math data, um, by race ethnicity, you can see that there is lower performance in twenty-four, twenty-five compared to twenty-one, twenty-two for all groups. And the largest gap, um, in twenty-four, twenty-five was fifty-four percent. Moving on to special populations, um, the multilingual learner and free reduced price lunch, um, free reduced meals group was similar in twenty-four, twenty-five to twenty-one, twenty-two. And the performance for the special education group, um, decreased in the last four years. So I'm going to hand it over to Dana to talk about how we are responding to the results.
Okay, so again, very similarly, um, many of the things that we do in English language or reading are similar to what we do in math as well. But to, just to note, some of the, um, some of the changes are maybe things that are different. Most highly important there is that we were able this year to reinstate five of our, um, elementary math specialists in the math area and bring that back as part of, uh, upsizing of our staffing. And so that was a nice addition. And then we're also providing specialized math support in our, um, my time at the middle school level with the Math Read One Eighty. Math is going through curriculum review right now, as Stacy mentioned, for those twenty-twenty-two math standards. And so Abby and his, um, team of math folks have been, Sarah Wyden, Becca Osby have been, um, very engaged in this. And really in focusing on those mathematic instructional practices as well as math rigor, the standards, um, and how they're put together has changed dramatically. And so they're working on that piece as well. And then really again, focusing on that formative assessment. So when we talk about formative assessment, we're talking about right in the moment in the classroom, what are teachers using at the, during the class or even at the end of class? So maybe you've heard of exit tickets or whatever, but what are they using in the moment that says I might need to reteach that differently? So even a quiz or something in the classroom can be a formative assessment that tells me, are my students getting this? So again, back to those PLC questions, what do I want my students to know? That's a big part of the math work right now. How will I know that they know it? That's that formative assessment. And then what will I do when they do know it? And what will I do when they don't know it? Because we also have students that will come in, um, already knowing that or at a higher level and what is our response to that? On a side note, our enrichment programming is also under review this year. And going through many changes in that as well and looking at, um, how we qualify our students for that. The boundary shifts, uh, made an impact on that. And what we discovered was we had different, um, qualification standards at different buildings. And so we've been working to stabilize that. And so, uh, Austin Tollerson oversees that and stays. And so Austin Tollerson oversees that and Stacy helps with that. And we've had a team with some principals looking at that work as well to say, how do we make sure that regardless of your address, how you qualify for those enrichment programs is the same? So we started out having to use our FastBridge scores as our measure. And now we are also looking to add on so that it's a multi-tiered measurement as well. And so we're doing that work currently. And probably in November, December, Austin and his team will be coming to you with an update on those qualification criteria, what are the multiple tools that we're using, how might parents ask more about that, or what would be our reconsideration process? All of that is still in the works, but that really gets again to our responses because we're not just looking for our students who are not getting it yet, but also looking at our students who are getting it.
Okay, so MCA participation at the high school. This graph shows both grade 10 and grade 11 on the same graph. And each one of the bars is a different school year. So you can see there was a large increase in the 22-23 school year in percent participation from the year before. But then looking at 23-24 to 24-25, there was a small decrease. One thing to note is that while we have been working at our participation rates at the high school in Wayzata, this is a statewide issue. It's not unique to Wayzata. It's just something that we're keeping track of and making sure that we're aware of it. And the goal is to increase participation. Then looking at the data for grade 10 by race ethnicity, you can see that in 24-25, the highest participation rate was in the Asian group at 95 percent. And the lowest participation was in the Black African-American group at 74 percent and white group at 79 percent. Then looking at the data for grade 11 by race ethnicity, there are some differences that you can see in 24-25. The highest participating group was the Asian group at 85 percent. And the lowest participation was in our white and Hispanic and Latino groups at 58 percent.
Okay, so again, then, just like the FastBridge data, we are currently working on setting those 25-26 goals. And again, we'll be looking to increase our performance on grades three through eight as well as our participation rate and also continuing to work on decreasing those gaps. Keeping in mind the difference between FastBridge and MCA data, that our MCA data is really about grade level benchmark data and our FastBridge is really about where students are performing on that. And so they give us two different pieces of information and they are systems data. And that really is one of the struggles at the high school level is for our students, the accountability to that or the purpose that test serves is a little bit harder for them to grasp than the ACT, for example. And so that tends to be our marker for that. The state continues to require that we do those MCAs at that level. And again, they really do provide us systems data because we can look at trends in grade level to see for gaps in our instruction. And the MCAs are highly correlated to the ACT. So if we can identify there are gaps in our curriculum or in our instruction, then that we can then address that, which could then increase our ACT scores. So I'll make my shameless plug to our parents that that really is critical, important data for us to increase ACT scores because if we can do better in our instruction and our curriculum, then our ACT scores also grow and improve. So I'll make a shameless plug.
Improving our MCA scores.
Yes.
You said improve ACT to-
Whoops, vice versa. Thank you.
MCA and ACT very closely linked.
Thank you. There you go.
All right, so on the next area that we're going to report on is our on-track to graduate. So previously, well, actually in our, in the goal areas for the state, we're, we have to report on students, all students graduating from high school. So previously, we had reported what percentage of students graduate. What we did this time around is we looked at not just who is graduating and are they graduating, but all along in high school, are they on track to graduate? So we're looking at students in grades nine through 12 every year being on track at the end of that school year. So the way we've defined on-track to graduate is students who have earned the number of cumulative credits expected at the end of their grade level. So looking at the data, you can see that for grade nine and grade 12, they're at 98 percent last year were on track by number of credits. And so this is just one year of data. This is the first year we're looking at this, so this is our baseline. So this is all of the data in this graph is for grade, for year 24-25. Grade nine, as I said, grade nine and 12 were at 98 percent. And grade 10 and 11 were lower at 96 and 95 percent. When looking at the data by race ethnicity, there were gaps in percentage of students who are on track to graduate at the end of the year. And the largest gaps were in grades 10 and 11.
So again, then looking at what is our system and that MTSS systems, look at how we are addressing students being on track and graduate. And we're really excited about this goal and working closely with the high school on it rather than did they just get there? But again, it's are we, what are we interrupting along the way? And the high school is kind of anchored in two areas this year are ongoing, and that's in presence and purpose. So this year, one of the focuses at the high school is on being present. And being present means how do we support each other and strengthen our relationships across the high school community, both as students and staff? A real strong focus around attendance this year because we know the data is strong. Simply put, if you are in school, you are going to do better and your likelihood of graduating is higher. So the high school is focusing in on how are we building those strong connections with students and noticing when they're not there and getting them back into school as well. And then their continued work on the portrait of the Wayzata graduate as well, providing that common language and vision as a way to cultivate those skills in every student. They also have a strong student support team, so made up of social worker counselor, dean, the assistant principal, and a plethora of others, supports, specialized services, et cetera, who get together on a very regular basis and monitor this data. So they're looking at grades, they're looking at attendance, credits, so they can identify any concerns quickly. They do provide intensive reading support at the high school using Read 180. And then they have a plethora of academic support programs such as their both in-house. So if we think of things like the Resource Center or the Academic Mentors, their Math Exploration Center, the Writers Workshop area, all of those are intentional processes are in place while in the high school for the students while they're there. And then when a student does fall behind, we have systems in place to catch them up quickly as well, which is credit recovery, summer school, independent study. And for those students who may have fallen further behind and we want to give them a heavy-duty boast, we do partner with Hinnupin Technical around Gateway Academy as well. And then in ninth grade, they start with personalized learning plans at the high school with their ninth grade. I see some heads shaking, you've been through it as parents, but with their ninth grade counselor, parent and guardian meetings to kind of sketch out what does their high school plan look like? It's not written in stone because we all know if we raise children ninth grade to what their interests are, but it's just a way to kind of roadmap it for our students, if you will, so that they can be, you know, having those conversations and see the plan forward. But again, at the high school, it's really about wrapping themselves around in relationships with their students and knowing their students to make sure then that they're on track to graduate. So again, we will be setting that 25-26 school year and it will be to increase the percentage of Wayzata high school students who are on track at the end of each grade level and then to decrease those gaps between our highest and our lowest groups once we have that data in. And then I wanted to just highlight a change that we're super excited, or in addition to the Wayzata system, that we're super excited about, that really is connected very strongly to the work we're talking about that tonight. And that is we have purchased a data visualization system called ABRE. Some of you who are part of the Teaching and Learning Committee of the Board got to see an entire presentation on this. And as we get a little more refined, we will bring that to the full board. But this has been about three years or so, three, four years in making. When we started the MTSS grant four years ago, very quickly realized that we just did not have a good system of data visualization. We had a lot, a lot of data and we still have a lot, a lot of data, but it was in many different places. And so the effort and energies that went from not only Stacy and her department, but our principals, our teachers, to bring that data into something that is actionable was very difficult. And what we know is if data is not actionable, then it really doesn't serve us a strong purpose. And so the intention of ABRE is to visualize our data and simplify complex data so that we get it to that piece. So right now, we are at, we've, we made the decision on ABRE, we vetted many different tools, landed on ABRE. And this is partnered very tightly with MTSS. So we have Kaia Mortensen and Courtney Norman, who are heading up that work with our buildings. We have three buildings piloting ABRE right now, Sunset Hill East and then One House at the high school. And then our principals now have all signed up to get trained and do some data literacy work around this too. And we'll start using it at just their level with their administrative teams. And from there, we will venture out into all of our buildings, hopefully January-ish, to using this with their RAP or their student support teams. ABRE's potential is pretty much endless in all the different dashboards and all the different ways that we can use our data from even your level as a board, at the board. So there could come a day, for example, when you have your own dashboard and you set your markers as to what you want and would be able to monitor that data at a moment's notice as well. So really having that data at the fingertips of our principals, of our department and of our teachers will allow us to be much more nimble in our responses. So we just wanted to make sure that we put that out there, that we're continuing to not only work at a student system, but also to be able to be more data literate and data responsive in our system. And we're super excited about that opportunity. And so that just brings us to the end tonight. And again, a way that through the directions that, in the equity commitment that you as a board set for us, how we are working to operationalize that at the district level as well as through the rest of the organization. And so we are ready for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Thank you, Dr. Lackner. Any comments, questions?
This is an excellent presentation. Thank you so much. I think it's just awesome, the plethora of graphics and statistics that really inform the great work our district's doing. I have one question and it's around MCA participation. Could you share some of the things you've been doing to, you know, while you mentioned it correlates very strongly to stronger ACT performances, kind of other things you're doing to promote students taking the MCA?
So I can speak to it- Oh, sorry, I can speak to it a little bit. We do provide information to families and to students about the importance of the MCA and how it helps our district make decisions. And I know it is, it's a challenge. We do have announcements that are done by the high school principal, Mr. Gangler. And we just do the best we can to make sure students understand where to be, when it is, and just making sure that it's as easily accessible to all of our students. But as we have mentioned, it has been a challenge. So I don't know if Dana, you have anything to add?
Yeah, I think as Stacy said originally, it is a concern across the state. And one concern I have is we could raise these numbers in ways that I see other districts doing that I would not encourage us to do. So we have districts who, for example, will add extra credit points to classes for showing up or who will do some other incentivizing. And that just, that just doesn't sit well with us and not a direction we've chosen to take. The reality at the state level is that there's not teeth at the state level put into this. And so our students are tested and tested and tested and tested again. And so the ACT is the high-stakes test or SAT or both for our high school students. That being said, I really think it's more about educating our community and our parents that this test is important to our instruction. It gives us, it is the test that gives us our best data about how we're doing on the state standards because it is aligned to the state standards and our state standards and that test are aligned to. So it is a tool that can help us as teaching and learning department and really our departments. So when Abi's meeting with math or Austin's meeting with English, that we can look and see are there gaps or places that our students are consistently not doing well, like we're doing at the middle level, where we can say vocabulary, for example, might be an area of emphasis and do we have enough in our curriculum? We don't always have a depth of information as well. We can use the ACT scores, but the ACT scores aren't necessarily norm to Minnesota state standards, right? And so I think it's really more about educating our students. We have made the opt-out a little bit more difficult, I think, over COVID.
Yeah, so in 21-22, the link to the opt-out form was included in the email to parents. So I think that's why the participation was so low. And since then, we've been very careful about making sure that the communication about the test is very clear. And then if anyone has any questions, they can reach out to the high school assessment office. So, and then also just other efforts in terms of communication and messaging and everything to our students and our parents. We've made some efforts in that sense as well.
You bet.
So you had mentioned, first of all, thank you for this presentation. I know it took a lot of effort to put all of this together and I appreciate- incredibly informative to us. You had mentioned some of the earlier slides that when there are fewer than 20 students within a racial group or another group, you don't report on it. And it's, I just want to clarify, is that for privacy purposes or what is the purpose behind that?
Yes, that's definitely for data privacy purposes, that we don't want to report any data on a smaller student group where you may be able to identify who the students are. So that's just a general practice. We don't report on any groups lower than 20.
Right, thank you so much.
As I was able to come in when we had a break and made a comment to you, it obviously shows that you're very professional. You know what looks like you are liking numbers and all. I really appreciate. But at the same time, looking at data, I like data too. If, I would like to ask to pull out to page 48, please. Forty-eight, sorry, forty-eight on, I guess, when it comes up as a key. On the slide, I mean, is a, okay, wait a minute, it's forty, I'm talking about grades two to five by grade. And it comes as when I, I'm using iPad, it shows forty-eight on them.
On the title of the graph, it says what is the graph? If you could let us know that, that'll tell us where we need to go in the presentation.
Is it the FastBridge?
Yes, FastBridge, sorry, yeah, FastBridge. Question I have, to be honest, I've done for two years AmeriCorps tutoring in the past. And yes, we used FastBridge data. I just realized recently, once I got an access from my school too, they had the motor till third grade, students are learning to read. After third grade, they are reading to learn. I'm curious, when we look at this data as in cohort, like 2021, second grade, the next year, it obviously becomes third grade, then fourth grade. Why are the numbers are not coming up? I would have said 2021, understandably, it was on and off, masking issues and all. But the numbers, if you look at cohort, what you liked in other slides, here, they are not circled, but the same principle. 2021, second graders were reading at 49 percentile, percent students were making aggressive growth. Then 2022, then 23, then 25. Why is that? Why are we, even after having Read Act training, why the numbers are not a little bit better?
So with this group of students, it's difficult to go cohort by cohort because it's a different group of students. So typical grade level, you're going to have some moving in and out. So you will have some loss in the cohort. However, with this particular data, because we're only looking at the students who start in summer high risk, that's could be a very different group of students when they're in second grade and then in third grade, could be a completely different group of students starting at summer high risk. So it's really tricky to try to do a cohort analysis. So I'm not sure if that was the question that you had, tracking like second to third grade to fourth grade.
Yep, sometimes, to be honest, obviously whomever stayed at high risk stays unfortunately there too, but you have a good point, I understand. And page, I mean, just one page above forty-seven. If, I would like to hear, why do you think it's, we are not doing better?
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a great question and one we're certainly monitoring. Not an easy answer. And again, at the building levels and at our level, we're continually looking at. So we need to look at our instruction practices. We need to look at our early identification practices. We need to look at assessments that we're using, how well is our curriculum aligning? I mean, I could probably go on and on. Maybe my team has some other things I'm not thinking about, but it's difficult. And our, obviously, our goal is to continue to raise that, that population. One of the struggles we're also having in our, in our special population is our growing numbers in that population. And so oftentimes, we, one of the things we're breaking it down as we use ABRE is what percentage of those students started in the YZeta district and what percentages of those students are new to our district? Because that plays a role in that. So it's just, you know, for me to name one specific reason why that's happening, I can't do that at this point, other than to say that is not something we're happy with, as are you or our classroom teachers or our building principals. And so we just continue to dive in to that data and try and pinpoint if we can see any specific areas that might be leading to that piece. It's also important to remember that in this, one student can hit in all three of those levels. And so sometimes it's a matter of impacting a smaller group of students as well.
And one more, actually I have a couple more questions. MCE, as comes for MCE results, what does mean to be proficient? Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Proficient on the MCA is for MCA III are students who are at the meets or exceeds level. So each grade level, the MDE sets a cut point where they have determined that a student who performs above that is proficient on the state standards and anyone below that is not proficient.
What is that number?
Oh, for proficiency for each of the grade levels, there, it's a three-digit score. And in each grade level, the first digit is the grade. So for example, in third grade, the scores are between 301 to 399. In fourth grade, it's 401 to 499 and so on. So for example, in third grade, a proficient score would be a 350. In fourth grade, it would be a 450. In fifth grade, 550 and so on.
On this one, yeah, numbers wise, I remember. But what about like, I believe it is percent, I mean, if you answer certain percentage, you would be considered to be proficient. Let's say you have, we're not allowed to see MCA tests, so I haven't seen myself. If you have, let's say, 100 questions, if you answer how many questions, you'll be considered to be proficient.
It's not done like that. So each, each item has a certain weight and a difficulty level. So depending on which items the students get right and which ones they get wrong, there could be a different calculation depending on the difficulty of the item. So it's not necessarily the percent that they got correct. It's all worked together in terms of the weighting of the items, what the student got in terms of which questions they got, and then put into a scale of the 1 to 99 in each grade level scale. So it's not necessarily a percent correct.
And page 44, please. I'm curious, sixth to eighth grade, are there not as many students? That's why percent is low, 10 to 12. Again, you have an iPad and it shows 44.
If you could just tell us what the title of it is, then we can.
Okay, 21, I see right now on this one, the number. Page 21.
So page 20, 21 is a.
Grade six to eight, 10 to 12, compared with, for example, ours, 31, 30, why is?
So are you looking at the six through eight by grade? Oh, the SMART goals, yes.
I think.
Yep, that makes sense. Yes, so for the percentage of students who are making aggressive growth in middle school, it's very, it's a very different situation than in elementary. The, the skill level and increase in each one of the assessments is very narrow compared to an elementary school. There's a lot more growth. So to see aggressive growth for students below grade level on this particular assessment is very difficult. So that's why we would typically see the percent making aggressive growth in middle school would be lower than in the elementary school, just based on the trajectory of reading development.
Thank you for, I didn't think about it. And one more, it's, I didn't see science for MCA.
We don't have any in our goals for that in our plan.
Yep, so for the 24, 25, yep, sorry. For the 24, 25 district goals, we didn't have science. Typically, we haven't included science. If you remember a long time ago, when we had No Child Left Behind and AYP, all of the, all of the assessments that they were focusing on were just reading in math. So we typically haven't reported those for a few years. However, with the new MCA IV coming out in 25, 26, we will be adding those to our goals because it's a different assessment and we have, we have some room to grow.
Thank you.
We want to track.
Are you building on her questions though? Because if you are, it can be in sequence. Okay, all right. Thank you. This is, this is a lot. And I do think it's really important to underscore that this is one snapshot in one thing and that we really need to, as we look to interpret, right, that we're, that we're thinking about all things and that remembering that this is satellite. A technical question. I was really excited to see about the second, about opening up OG for our second grade teachers. Like, what's the uptake on that? Is that, is it being well received? And what will we do with who's receiving it and who's not and how we can get better?
Yeah, so we really, maybe Austin, if he wants to jump in on this one, we went round and round on this because it's intended for their youngest learners. So K1, but knowing our two. So it is optional for our second grade teachers. And the struggle we always have is to do the training during the school year means they are out of the classroom and it is intensive training. So it's several, it's a good chunk of time and we break that up over the year. Or we offer it in the summer and we pay teachers to do it over the summer, but we are asking them to then give their summer. So it's always a yin and a yang on how we get this accomplished. And I don't know, Austin, do you know the exact percentage?
You know, I don't, I hate to hazard a guess because I could be off. I can look that up, get back to you, I'll let you know for sure. It's, you know, it's on the less than half side for sure, but working on it.
Yeah, so we'll continue to offer that in second grade, maybe another summer of that. We also continue to try and figure out where we can squeeze more hours out of time. And I don't know what that would look like, but we continue to work on that and collaborate with, I'm Rachel Falkowski, on what could that look like? Are there other options? Are there weekends or, you know, how do we get that training in? And then we've also made sure though, any new K1 teacher has also been mandated to take that training as well. So we have been working on that. And the human resource department, technology, were great this summer. When we knew teachers who were hired in April and May, we were able to onboard them early so that they could participate in the summer's training. And that has been huge as well.
Good, well, and that is good to hear. It's a, it's a bummer that it's maybe not as well received, but maybe it is. I feel like we often run into our second grade families that are thinking, oh, they're just a little bit slower, right? And they're doing that. And there's word from education professionals and medical professionals, those in mental health professionals, just give them time in that development. But then it becomes super crisis at second and third grade. And so the extent to which we can encourage that and support that and create an infrastructure, I look at the, create infrastructure financially and in training wise to do that, it seems like it's an investment worth making.
And I think I'll add on that to the, the other end, that's not part of our goal reporting, but that really should be. We're really working tightly also with our early learning programming because the sooner that we can get to our students, especially those who might struggle with some of those basic skills that are foundational for our reading, the better we can do. And so we've really worked with our early learning team. They too have got the Read Act training. Teams now with our early learning, they PLC. My win then is working with, with that group of teachers and professionals as well. And we're really thinking about also, how do we reach out to our community early learning programs and partner more deeply with them? And what are the skills that all of our kindergartners have? And we're toying around with this summer, like, how might we provide that instruction also to those providers? Because we know not all of our students go through our early learning, specifically YZeta program, but if they can come in with those foundational skills. And so some of the training that we're doing there, we're trying to go that way as well so that we can impact that before second grade.
So that upstream is good, right? And now I'm going to say probably something that you've heard me say before, which is that this is far from just awesome, right? I mean, this is, this is really the numbers that we're seeing on this paper and for some of our populations is, is completely unacceptable. And, and I, I have a firm belief that, that we're trying really hard. And I have a firm belief that we're making an impact. If we, if we disaggregate our each and every, there's many evries that are doing, that are doing better and that are doing well. There's lots of eaches that still aren't. And, and so my question for you is, for you both is, as we look at this, I heard a few things, but what gives you hope, right? Or what are, what are you holding on to in that this is, this is something that we've got to pay more attention to, to move it forward? And, and what are you really driven to do right now so that we don't keep having these meetings every year?
So I think you've heard us say many times, there's, when you saw the slides, there's lots of different things within our system we do to respond. I just want to share an anecdotal story from today, just that when you think about what gives you hope. I had a conversation with one of our instructional coordinators, Anne Farrenbach, who is in one of our buildings today, and shared with me stories, some of the things that we're doing specifically in kindergarten. And she was a former kindergarten teacher, so she has a unique perspective to understand and appreciate the work that's happening. And they're integrating some of those tools we're talking about, the OG, looking at a new curriculum, looking at the ways we support teams and supporting their students. And she said, from the teacher perspective, teachers were saying, I've never seen my kindergartners at this point in the year this successful and doing so well across the board of the team of teachers at that building. And then she said, in talking with students, right, and just talking with them about what they were learning, the excitement they had around their learning, the success they were having around the learning just filled her heart. So just an anecdotal story that shares a little bit about what we're seeing, where we're seeing successes and things that are going to take time to show up on the big board of the standardized data and the district level data. You know, you look at any, any change you make, takes three to five years. So over the last few years, we're like wondering, when are we going to see that bump? We do have to remember, it's only been a few years since the Read Act, since a lot of things we've been trying. And so, you know, again, hope's not a strategy, but we are seeing some of those things already here and now day to day in our classrooms where we're finding that success, so.
Let the guys, well, I'm just thinking you're, you know.
I'm going to echo something that Dana says often. The PLC process is an ongoing, never-ending process. And we are committed to that process and we're starting to see the fruits of our labor. The heaviest lift is for our classroom teachers in our system and working together, that collective efficacy, that belief that what happens as an outcome is because of what we do intentionally. Just because our students are successful doesn't mean that it just happened on its own. It's because of what we did, what we did that was different and what we did that was done differently. So that collective efficacy piece, I think, is starting to show up. And we are most excited and, and hopeful that the supports and the structures that we provide to our course-like teams, our grade-level teams is going to show up in the results that we see. Another anecdotal observation, we've seen a change in how we talk about students instead of saying, my students in my class as a third grade teacher to our third grade students. So that when we have to differentiate, we can work collectively as a third grade team and say, how about you take this group of students and work on this skill that needs a tier-two level of intervention or perhaps even a tier-three level. I'll take some students and extend their learning because of one teacher can't do all of it together. I'm really excited personally about the work that we're doing in math. It's, those of you who are in the committee of the board have heard me say many times, it's math's turn now. And so we are digging in and really identifying, what are the skill areas? And this is where some of the MCA data is very helpful. We can dive into specific benchmarks and skill areas where we see our students excelling and celebrating and seeing how can we replicate, replicate that in, in areas where we need to do better. And looking at patterns across our system, if we have nine elementary, see if there are patterns that we notice across our buildings? Is there a pattern that we notice within our building? And how do we build on that success? Our five math specialists in our nine elementary buildings are engaged in some phenomenal work. So I'm really excited to hopefully bring that at an upcoming board meeting to share with you as well. Thank you.
I think also then, thanks to both of them because I knew they're, they work more tightly with our coordinators than, than I would and have that hands-on. But I think we are, you know, ABRE is a tool. So it's just that. But it has the potential to be, to lend to a transformational change. And so being able to get something in our educators' hands, we know, we're, you know, we know the research. And sometimes we don't use that well enough in education, but we know the two most important factors are the teachers in the classroom and the principals in the buildings. Those are the two folks that we need to support the most. And we do that by getting tools in their hands that make them successful and have them deeply understand. So I think this has been, it's just really exciting. We had one of our instructional coordinators and one of our principals at an elementary principal meeting, and I'll tell that one, one of our principals, who's a veteran principal, got emotional and teared up over the presentation on ABRE because she said, I'm giving a little it away there, but she said, it's, it's one of the first times in my career that I've seen something that actually could really, really impact what we're doing in the classroom and make a transformational change. It's a heavy lift for us. It's a heavy lift for the tech department, but it is the right work. I think if you couple that with CEL that we've continued to invest in and really deeply about how we support from a central office, And we're boosting that this year, how we support our principals instructional leaders, how our principals calibrate on what they see in the classrooms. And we give them time to be instructional leaders, because that's their skill set. That's what gives me hope and passion. So I think we're heading on the right road and I've said this before and I'll say it over and over again. And if there's a school district that's going to close that achievement gap, because it's not, I mean, we have one of the high, we have the highest gap in the country in Minnesota. So we're not alone in this. But darn it, if there's a district that can close it, it should be Wayzata. Because where we start from, because of the high quality teachers that I interact with every day, they're just phenomenal. And our principals right there beside them, um, I have hope that, and then, yeah, not a strategy, but I have a belief. It's bigger than a hope. I have a core belief that, that this is something we can do here. It won't happen overnight, but we can do that.
So I will echo what Sarah says, it's hard to see the persistent gap. And every time we're presented with it, you guys hear me in the committee meeting going, ugh, again. Like, it's, it's hard. And I know it's hard on educators as well, because you're working so hard and on the big board, it still shows that it's not there. But each and every student is each and every student and we can get them their gains. I, I'm thinking about it too, Sarah, is, is how are we finding ways to improve this? And how are we finding hope in this work? Because we need to, um, and we need to find ways forward to, to improve. So as, I'm connecting a whole bunch of pieces here, right? Because we come to this table and we hear a lot of information and it's over the course of time and then we get the data. And, um, our systems, it feels like our systems are in a good place, okay? Our numbers are not there, but our systems are in a good place. And so as I think about, we're looking at our lowest testing groups in whatever area that is. And we see a huge gap between our lowest testing group and our highest testing group, right? And then what you guys end up doing are now teachers and our schools, you end up differentiating for each and every one of those students to identify what the core issues are, right? Because within a, a certain minority group, there could be different issues that are driving it, right? It could be that a student is an English learner, or it could be that the student is a special ed student or, and it could be both, right? Like, so there's many different configurations and, and that's why the individualization is so important. Stay with me. So, and, and so you're identifying all these barriers. And as you identify the barriers for each and every, and you start having different ways, like our culturally responsive tools and our P L Cs and all of these systems that build upon each other, it's going to impact every student, not just our students that are scoring low, but it'll help every single one of our students. And that's what a successful system does. And so I just want to say for me, I'm starting to see how this all comes together and why all of these pieces are so critically important for us. So thanks for all of the information that you've given us throughout the year, building up into this. We only get to see the data once a year, which is tough, I know sometimes, because we want to know, like, how's it going? How's it going? But, but the high level data can only come once a year so that we can modify and make our goals and set up for the next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so both of you have two questions and one comment that may result in a question. But let me ask you the questions first. You talked about the Read one eighty, the reading support. Do you have any data that you have accumulated so far? And if so, what, what does that tell you? What is it showing?
Yeah, they collect that data at the building level, specific to individual students. So where we would see it is as those scores rise on this level. But we have not at a teaching and learning level peeled that back, because it's really about responsive. So the teacher in the classroom is responding to those individual scores at the.
It's kind of new, right, though, also?
Um, no, Read one eighty's been around for, but it's new to the high school.
We had it at middle school, um, but we made a change a few years ago. But it's only at the high school right now. It's been around for a long time, but not necessarily here in Wayzata and in our high school level.
Uh, yes, really, since I've been here, so for at least the last four to five years. It's really about, it's a tool that's really highly rated, research based and effective when implemented correctly in the high school model. As far as their block schedules, they're really conducive to that type of a tool. So again, as Dana said, the data we have is at individual student level, but it is a highly effective research based tool.
Okay, uh, the second question I have is about participation in M C A testing. If you improve participation, let's say it's a hundred percent, you're able to get that. Would, would, what would you expect that to result in as far as the scores, M C A scores are concerned? Overall, will they go down, will they go up or?
Well, um, so we only reported on grades three through eight. So we didn't report on the high school. In order for their results to be representative of the high school program, they would need to have at least ninety for, ninety percent participation. So it's really difficult to know, based on the results that they had in twenty twenty five, um, the percent proficient, how that would change if we got a higher participation rate. It, it would just be a guess, um, on whether it would go up or down.
Sure, participation is important, but we also need to know what it does to the scores, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so the last thing I want to do is make a comment that I have been making every year. I, I don't know if you remember, achievement and integration presentation. I always worry about not just Wayzata, the state, and I find out now that it's, it's a problem in the entire country. And I will quote you something from seventy four million education institute, the, the organization. It's the, it's the graduation rates that are at ninety eight percent. When we know that achievement gaps exist, kids, many of them probably can't read or cannot do math. And we still graduate them, because I think the Department of Education requirement for graduation does not tell you what grades they have to get. They have to take only a certain number of credits, right? So I think that, that's, I think is, is again, something that I all, I'm always concerned about. And then this seventy four million, um, I can share this with you later on, but that organization, I'm just going to read the headline. Many young adults barely literate yet earned a high school diploma. Okay, functionally illiterate high school graduates may have been passed through the school system without gaining needed skills. So this is obviously, you know, a, a countrywide issue, not just to Wayzata or the state. I know you guys are doing, making a lot of effort to change that and I appreciate it. It's still not happening and that really, really concerns me. Why, what, what are we producing? When they graduate, they go to college, we don't even know what happens. So I'm not saying we, we are, we are better than most other districts, I think, in the entire state, right? As far as the achievement gaps, we are much better. Uh, our, our results, our achievements, uh, you know, the scores are for the same demographic, we are definitely better than other districts and overall in the state. But that's something that I, I'm still concerned about. But that, that's my comment. It's not a question. If you have an answer, I would like to hear that.
I have a follow up question to that. I thought you had to take a certain number of credits and pass. Is that correct?
Yeah, so one thing our, our diplomas would be indicative of, if students have, have received a passing grade above. I don't want to get into a grading conversation too deeply, but, you know, we used to have, or we tried here in the district, I believe, before my time to do a standard. Our students have to know it at a seventieth percent, you know, seventy percent or above. So the, because that's not, and you can earn credit at a, let's say a sixty one percent or above, then yes, you can earn credit for a course and maybe not have accumulated some of this, the essential knowledge of that course and still have credits, which I would argue, personal and immediate, that that's one of the struggles with our antiquated grading system in the country that we do on a Carnegie unit is because we are saying you can graduate with maybe missing forty percent of what we're assessing at. We can also have an argument if what we're assessing at is what the students need to know. And that's why if we look at our A C T scores and our high growth and that, it would suggest to us that we're doing pretty well for our student population in that. Mr. Gingler comes of the years and shows, you know, his data on how we are doing better with some of our specialized populations, how we're closing some of those. Stacy showed tonight how some of our achievement gaps are closing. And I'd be curious, Melon, I saw that article actually, because, you know, a nerdy teaching and learning person is going to be, you know, drawn to something that says. But it's also asking then any good research on what are we using to mark illiteracy versus functional literacy? Versus not all of our kids go to a four year college? So what, what is our marks of success? There's just, it's very loaded and convoluted. And so, um, always areas that we can do better, but there's a gap between graduating and being illiterate, um, for sure.
Okay, thank you, thank you. That's all I had. Anybody else comment, question? Yeah, Valentina, go ahead.
I actually appreciate your question. I heard it last year and here in this year. I have tough time understanding it, because when I was at M S B, it was interesting to hear rural area, uh, board members, they know each other. They actually know even, I mean, uh, what kind of specialties, uh, high schoolers are getting into. We know each other's phone numbers and all. It was, what was interesting to hear, they were saying that their college, like, uh, uh, technical college would be complaining, do you know, can you do better with high schoolers? Your high schoolers are coming, they cannot measure, they cannot do basic things. So yes, it is, it is happening. I am, I mean, uh, I'm glad to be one of a parent, a proud parent who is doing far better. But at the same time, there are quite a bit of students in our district who are not there. And when we are saying for each, uh, student, this is not for each student. And when we're graduating, uh, students who got kind of, um, results, we're not doing any favor, neither to, uh, to them, neither to our society, to be honest. I would like, I, if somebody comes to my house, I would like them to be able to measure, I mean, to do basic skills. So it's, I, to me, it's still, uh, mind boggling when you see graduation, uh, rate number. And when you see, uh, M C A test results and, um, I, I haven't seen, uh, science results, even though I went to Minnesota Ed, uh, obviously too. Yes, uh, when we're saying we're doing for each and every, we would like to see growth in that side for students also. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Lackner, Dana, Austin and Abby. Thank you all for coming and presenting this. The next one is in November, right?
Correct, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so this completes our work session for this evening. The time is now seven thirty seven, the Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education Work Session for Monday, October twenty seven. Twenty ten, twenty five is adjourned.